I'm worried about you guys, I don't want to have my back too.
Alright everyone, I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight. I know that you guys have a lot to do, there were some practices going on, so I want to just go ahead and recognize that by saying thank you guys for coming out. I know it's going to be recorded, so you could have accessed it that way, but just simply because you're here, you have the opportunity to listen and ask questions and just interact with us makes it that much more meaningful, so thank you for coming. The other thing I want to be absolutely thankful for is for Apex putting this on for us and inviting myself and Dr. Albertson out to have this discussion and help educate and push our club forward. So if you don't know me, my name is Jen. I am an assistant director of coaching here for Apex, and I'm going to let Dr. Albertson introduce herself because I could never do enough justice and I am just so blessed that I get to hang out with her. I'm not even joking.
Hi, I'm Naomi Albertson. I've known Randy actually for a long time. I've been here in the community for about 10 years. I'm a sports medicine physician and have been, gosh, I was at Rock for nine of the 10. I'm over at CR Neurosurgery, I actually work over in Incline as well. But I've been on the injury side entirely too long and recently opened a company called Nevada Sports Science, which is how we've teamed up to be more on the injury prevention side and the sport maximization side. So that's what I'm going to kind of bring to the top today is sort of that background of why this topic is important as it relates to performance and injury.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and rock and roll straight into it.
Alright, cool. So, we're going to be talking about periodization, which is a giant word for planning, okay? So really when we talk about planning specifically for athletes, we want to plan meticulously. We want to plan to the hour, right, for our athletes. And what I want you guys to think about while you're here, while we're talking through all of these concepts, is thinking about your own athletes, right? As teenagers or maybe even a little bit younger, but I also want you to, in your mind, think about that compared with whoever you follow in the pros, okay? Your pro, your favorite pro athlete, okay? Because obviously, these are two different levels of skillsets and it's a progression and we only get to that progression if we do it right, right? And part of that progression is not that I want all of your kids to become pro athletes. I do not, nor do I think that's reality, right? But what I do want is for your kids to have a great time playing the sport they love, hopefully, and continue to have a love of playing, period, of being active. Because that's what keeps us healthy, right? That's what keeps us out of trouble, that's what keeps us later in life from having heart attacks and strokes and all these other things that we talked about in my world. So, we're going to start with just some rule basics that a lot of you, I'm sure, are already very familiar with in the terms of what we're talking about here. Duration, load or progressive load, and then volume. So, duration is exactly that, it's time. How much time do you spend doing a specific activity with an athlete? Whether that is strength building, or it's dribbling, or it's sprint work, or it's whatever, right? So, duration is time, just put that somewhere in your mind, okay? Load or progressive load is a measure of how intense that work is. So, sometimes, you know, we'll see our kids like doing tons of sprints. That's pretty intense, right? Versus maybe just a light jog, or maybe they're holding a plank position, right? So, varying different levels of intensity. Again, put that somewhere in your mind that we're talking about, time and intensity. Alright, well, volume is kind of the total here. So it's, if we took the time and the intensity and we truly kind of multiplied it together, that's going to give us this volume, okay? So we're going to kind of keep moving forward here. And I want you to keep those terms in the back of your minds, but I also want you to start thinking about, why do we do this to athletes, right? It's sort of a funny concept, like, why do we make them sprint, right? Well, okay, game like soccer, obviously that makes sense. But think about it as it relates to other sports here. If you have a swimmer whose race is 1,000 meters, do they need to be doing sprint testing or doing sprints? Maybe, maybe not, right? So we kind of need to start thinking about what it is we're doing and putting that into the context of periodizing these workouts so that we get the most out of our athletes when we want it, right? So, we're going to talk a little bit about training stress. And what training stress does, or that load or volume does, is it actually evokes a physiologic response with, that requires recovery, right? So, if I go do 100 sprints, I will absolutely throw up and then I'm going to need a whole bunch of time to recover, right? Now, some of our athletes who are well-trained, they could handle that just fine. They won't need quite as much recovery as I will, right? Because I don't do that. I don't do sprint, I don't sprint anymore. That being said, it's really important to know that stress or load requires recovery. The other thing that's kind of cool about the body is that recovery allows us to repair. That's cool, right? So if we hurt something in some way, if we take that recovery time, we can actually repair. But if we don't take that recovery time, guess what? It doesn't go well, right? Things progress. So, the last thing I want you to kind of know here, and this is because Jen's going to show you some awesome graphs that take this concept into, into play, and it's super compensation. So, super compensation is exactly what you would think. It's like if you compensate back to your baseline, you're recovering, right? If you compensate above your baseline, that's super compensation. And that's what happens with athletes if we time their periodization right, okay? So we want to see that super compensation, we want to see our athletes gain, we want to see them get beyond where they were to start with. So you can see kind of by these, you know, defining these terms and understanding these physiologic steps, that when you properly train timing and you, sorry, when you properly time your training and you put the right amounts of load at the right times, you can expect super compensation and you can also expect certain levels of play, right, or of performance. So, really important. And I think it's important as we're start thinking about things like state championships, right, with those super elite athletes. Like, you don't want them recovering the day they're, they've got their most important race at the Olympics, right? That's not going to go well. We want them super compensated, ready to go, right? So really important concept. So, when periodization is done wrong, when we don't allow for that recovery and we don't allow for that super compensation, just like I said, you can have injuries that don't recover, right? And we wind up with these overused injuries or, you know, just injuries in general. Fatigue issues, we wind up with something called overtraining and lots of injuries, which we'll talk a little bit more about later. So what is recovery? I just want to talk about that briefly, we will continue to talk about this as we go through. But recovery is sleep, right? Adequate nutrition and psychological stress. Alright, so let's think about our teenagers here for a second. Any of them have stress? Right, I have two of them at home too. Of course they have stress, right? Throw finals week in there, that's really fun, right? So, throw that in the context of adequate nutrition. I always love when my son comes home from lacrosse practice with his bag of tuckies. I'm like, really? That's what we got? Awesome, right? So, adequate nutrition is super important. I mean, these, we have to teach our kids that, okay, it's okay to have the snack, but it's also important that you're giving your body what it needs to recover. And then sleep, and I wrote up here, more than 10 hours, believe it or not, Stanford University, um, two years ago, decided that their Division One athletes who are on scholarship now have curfew for 10 hours of sleep. 10! They are not allowed to be seen outside their rooms, right? Because it's that important for their athletics programs. So, think about your own kids, right? I mean, I've got one, you know, closes the door and his head hits the pillow and he's out. The other one is like, I think I'll rearrange my furniture. Maybe I'll put my outfit out for tomorrow, do my hairstyle, right? Like, whatever that looks like. Trying to kind of teach our kids that, you know, this sleep piece of the equation is really important for recovery and for, um, performance. Alright, I'm going to hand this over to Jen, she's going to, she's going to get you really riled up here.
Yes, these are some of my favorite topics, thank you for letting us into this. So, where, I'm going to start to build some more of that picture as it relates to then how us as coaches can at least on the micro cycle side, how we think about, uh, periodization and building our training sessions and then the importance of us trying to talk and communicate together. And I'll actually show you something that looks kind of like this in real terms in real life on a team that I actually coached at the college level. But, here's a research study out of a, out of a nutrition textbook. This was actually a soccer team. Forgive me, I don't have all of my notes memorized. My, my super notes are out in the, in the office back that way. But, let's just take this graph for an example, okay? On this side of the chart, we're actually looking at the actual energy in the muscles, so we can manage, we can track that. So in this study, we were tracking how much glycogen stores were inside these muscles when the athletes were training, right? We can understand that. We have a training session, so let me take one more step back. This is six days, this was tracked over six days. We have a training session on day one, a training session on day two, a training session, two training sessions between days three and four. So two training sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, one on the next day on day four, one on day five, and nothing on day six, okay? As we train and we eat and we rest, if we don't get adequate rest, we're, our ability to have top level elite muscle contractions diminish. We can all understand that concept. You all at some point probably in your life exercised or ran a race or, you know, did pick up on a day and the next day you're like, I'm kind of sore, right? We all understand that concept. We continue to train like that and we try to go heavy every day, we are starting to now decrease our ability to actually maximize what it is that we're trying to get out of it. And if we drop too low, now we're having contractile dysfunction, which, that's, that's, as soon as the horse comes in, you're like, I actually can't sprint today, it's not going to happen, right? But as we give ourselves a little bit more adequate rest, now, and we're rested and fed, rested and fed, super compensation happens. So the, in this study, the, uh, glycogen concentration actually increased above that threshold from day one, just because of them resting. Now, this is where I can't remember what the age group wasn't this team, I've read so many research studies. There's more research on men's and boys soccer than there are out of England than there is on women's soccer. I know this was a men's soccer team, I just can't remember if they're adolescents or if it was, um, there's.
Can I make one comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So on the contractile dysfunction, so that actually means that the muscle coordination is not there at that time and that is risk for injury, right? So, just kind of keep that in mind as Jen's talking like, okay, well, it looked like those two training sessions at the beginning, okay, it looked okay, things were looking pretty good, and then darn it, that double day, kind of did these athletes in, right? Not enough recovery, like you said. And then their ability to perform, not only the amount of glycogen in their muscles, but their ability to contract those muscles in a concerted way. Think about your 12 to 15 year old girl soccer players, ACL tears. This does not go well, right? So really keep that in mind, so thank you.
Well, and take this into play because this is easily, like, one of the easiest concepts to sometimes jump onto is like high school preseason and how they're preparing for that, right? And the number of times that we are training and then maybe on a Saturday we decided to do a two-a-day training session because that's where we are. That's what I experienced when I was a high school freshman in 1999. I don't know what it's like now, but this would be very similar to going into college preseason. So we would see those same sort of things if those kids, which I'm coming a little bit off topic, but if you are actually prepared for this six-day training session, you won't have quite as much dysfunction because your body has already got the training load involved. Do you guys have any questions so far? Thoughts, comments? Okay, so we'll move into the next one. So this is actually my, a college team that I coached. This, some of these metrics I'll talk to you about because I think it helps bring this point home to some extent. This is preseason, this is preseason for a Division One women's soccer team. Uh, at one point, we're ranked in the top 25 in the country, right? So, as far as periodization and load planning is concerned, this orange line right here is actually a measure of the training load over the seven days, it's a rolling seven days, a rolling seven day average, and it, and it drops down. So preseason started August 2nd, technically it was the first day of practice, and you can see how the training load starts to build, right? And then we have to take some rest days in between to make sure we're giving a little bit of adequate rest. But knowing that the lovely NCAA gives us so much time to prepare on day... Do the math for me, 17? Two weeks? That's our first preseason game. Now that it doesn't look like it's that intense because it takes in the average at that point inside the kids who actually weren't playing major events. But that is where we had our first actual soccer game. So we had two weeks to prepare. Imagine that previous slide, right? If the kids just showed up to training and they're like, here we go, then by day 17, and we don't give them any off days, there's not a lot that's going to happen there. We're not going to actually be able to perform very well. We could put ourselves at risk of injury. I can tell you that we did not have any injury risks here. We actually learned a lot of things from the previous year and managed our soft tissue injuries nicely, right? Uh, this stuff is actually measured, not that we get to do it in this place, but this is actually measured by internal load, so heart rate variances, we're looking at aerobic work versus anaerobic work, which is cool, something that I enjoyed in the last two years to look at. But I wanted to show you an example of super compensation and this is the easiest way to do it, is using HRV. Some of you might actually use wearable technology, maybe you do, maybe you don't, when you work out. Uh, HRV is called heart rate variability. So it is the amount of time between each heartbeat. If you've ever tried to measure your own heartbeat and you're like, try doing the 60 seconds, you're like, but it's, you feel your heartbeat sort of like jump and it doesn't stay consistent. That's a higher, uh, heart rate variability, that's a good sign. That's actually a sign from a health standpoint that you're in a good, healthy place, uh, cardiovascularly, and you are also less stressed out. All of those, uh, components go into it. If you have a lower HRV score, you could actually just be psychologically stressed out. You could be overtrained. There's a lot of questions that come out of these things and so as a coach, I have to have the context behind it. So, I can't give you all the context because this was from 2017 and ages ago. But, this is us after a whole month of preseason. Here's an HRV score. I want to give you this example right now. All of the blue lines that you can see are training sessions that we ran. All of the blank lines are not times the student athletes reported to us. So we have no idea what happened between Monday and Tuesday. Friday and Saturday, a lecture definitely happened before that. And then Monday, Tuesday, Monday was the off day and Tuesday the HRV score goes up, right? The point I want to make is that our HRV score went down and we would have considered having two rest days off, that this number should have gone higher, right? Because we have no idea what happened here, we can all, we can assume that the training load or the stress load on the body caused us to go in the wrong direction. The reason why I thought this was a good example for us to, to look at from a soccer coaching standpoint, and a youth soccer coaching standpoint is, if I ask the coaches in the room, which I won't, a rhetorical question, how many of you know exactly what your students, your athletes are doing every single day of the week? You have no idea. And then, but if you had to guess, how many of them are potentially playing on multiple teams, going to different practices, playing other sports concurrently in the same season? I say that and I have a dual-sport athlete and all four dual-sport athletes. But now we live in a world where everyone's doing everything 10 months out of the year at the same time. So as a coach, if I'm trying to plan for periodization and I have no idea what happened on Monday and Tuesday, and now, we can't do this at the youth level. I don't know if they're rested and recovered, and on this day anyways, they had a high day because we had a point to prove. Uh, on this high day, you could assume that people were still hurting on the Thursday and the Friday because they weren't in a good place to actually perform at a high level, right? And we play games on Thursdays and Sundays here at this time too. So we at least had an idea of what, where we wanted to go with it. But, the whole point is, if we're trying to help our kids get more fit and do the right thing, if we don't know as coaches, what is going on outside of our own practice when we are actually trying to periodize on our training session forums and do the right thing? We don't know what to do, we actually can't help mitigate injury risk because you could be overtraining and we have no idea what's going on. Does that make sense? We can use an example from earlier this week. But, and it, I can, you, I can see it because now that I'm coaching within one of my own teams, I've got, we've got athletes that are doing a handful of different things and activities and when I know what they're doing, it's easier for me to try to make an adjustment for the group. But it is very difficult to make an adjustment for the entire group on one person, if that makes sense, right? Somebody shows up tired, I either have to ask you to sit down because you look like you could put yourself at risk of injury and you don't perform, or I have to ask the entire group to come back and be in the average, alright? Now, to our actual plan. Some of us got to see this on the Zoom call. I'm going to zoom in a little bit for you. Vanessa showed it to us on day one and it was probably like, what is that? It's too small to see and you just zoomed back and forth in it. There was just an introduction to it. This is still slightly an introduction to it because I want to focus more on like the training session to some extent and how we calculate some of those loads. But, here's back to the training calendar. We'll zoom into it a little bit. I apologize because I can't pause this, but we're going to go through, you're going to get to see across the entire calendar. You'll see some little suggested, this is all suggested and still a working document. So I want to say that again because Vanessa said that in that first meeting. This is still a working document and we're still working with our coaches on it. We didn't get to have a coaches meeting this week because of the holiday and the job and all that. But, this is all still building, right? So with periodization in mind and knowing that we need to have some segments where the kids have rest moments, you have to plan for that. You have to actually schedule it. This is when we're going to go high and heavy and this is when we need to back off so we can allow the body and psychologically, the mind, to digest what it is that just happened so we can super compensate physically and mentally. So let's see if I can make this play now. We'll go through some of this. You can see some of the, the lines on the graph, it's true, like, this is where it's going to go too fast, right? The principles of play that we want to put in place, the, the duration of how long we train these sessions are going to be, what it is that we actually want to teach. So we're periodizing also the learning, but also the physical development. Now, from a standpoint of keeping it sports-specific, physical preparation components, down here is where the coaches are actually now trying to plan for practice. Are we having an intentional recovery training session based off of what we perceive? Because we're not actually asking our athletes yet what their perceived rate of exertion is, which is RPE. We can say based off the training session and our knowledge as coaches of how hard a three-on-three activity is, or five-on-five activity is, or six-on-six activity, or the pool-sided game is. We have good understanding of that because US Soccer does a good job educating it and we are going to continue to do the same good, the same job, educating our own coaches and ourselves as coaches in Apex. But understanding the different types of training sessions that we can put on. A recovery training session is an RPE, rated perceived exertion, two out of three, so I'm really not doing that much, versus a 10, which is going to be a practice, or sorry, a game rather, uh, which we saw over here, right? Nine to 10 is a game. We build our practice and our training sessions based off information like this, as well as the duration and the volume as we just spoke about with, uh, Dr. Albertson at the beginning of those slides. We have the adaptation time based off of what science tells us. Right now, science tells us that we actually do need around 96 hours to recover from a game. That doesn't mean you don't do anything. That means you're just not having another red day or those higher moderate days. You're actually allowing the body to come back in and recover properly so we can be super compensated after a game. Questions? Thoughts? There's a lot that goes into planning from all of our coaches. So I hope that you also leave this and walk away and go, oh, you guys don't just show up to practice and say, this is what we're going to do today? Like, we're actively thinking about work-to-rest ratios because if we're trying to train, as an example, my team isn't, the last 20 minutes of the first half, the last 20 minutes of the second half, that sounds more like the older model. The last 10, 15 minutes of the first half, the last 15 minutes of the second half for our lower kids, maybe, little kids maybe, they're just petering out. Well, there are things that we as coaches can do now with the work-to-rest ratio and the duration of our practice to help improve that component without kids doing other random things. We can do it in the context of the game with the ball so that we have all the demands of an actual game, so they improve the right way, right? We are intentionally trying to train energy systems at practice and periodizing for, um,
I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to say. No, so, the other thing to keep in mind is that the, the number one and two reasons why kids leave sports, it's not fun and injury, right? So if we don't periodize, we already talked about that, that's going to lead to injury. Fun is all this stuff, right? It's, one day is one type of exercises and the next day it's something different. You're not just running laps around the field every day because no one would show back up again, right? So it's all of this that you guys are learning as it relates to, you know, the, the fun of the sport and kind of keeping it interesting for these kids so that they keep showing up.
I'm glad that you said that because, uh, in building and working with like the ideas of how we wanted to present some of this information, we used to use a, uh, a wellness questionnaire, if you will, that was built by some great strength and conditioning coaches and very intelligent people beyond my understanding of how Excel works. Uh, they created a wellness questionnaire that we can ask the kids all these questions, but then they derived some statistics out of it. And one of the coolest ones was monotony, training monotony. Because what you're, and it doesn't, it's not taking into context the actual activities that you're doing, but making sure that you are making the days high and some of the days low because you don't want to be training an average. So when the monotony score was too high, you knew that you were probably boring your kids because the training load and the intensity were at the same rate every, for the last seven days, right? That monotony score goes too high, you're going to probably bore them, but you're also then not doing anything physically with the body. And what you are actually creating is average athletes because what we want to do is go really hard and maximize everything we have on those hard days and then give us time to actually rest and recover and then go again, right? And actually, track and field, we were talking about that earlier. Track and field is the best at the high-low model of periodization. Why, why are we so fast? We have to make sure there's, there's components in between. Soccer players can be doing the same thing, we need to be thinking about that the same way. So thank you for like triggering that in my head because there was a score literally on my dashboard that said monotony so that we made sure that we truly were, based off of their rate of perceived exertion, really actually were having high work days. We collected way too much data, so we did that and we did the internal load, we did GPS data. Questions? Thoughts? Comments? Coaches? Alright, this is our training session template. Everybody has seen it at some point, our coaches are going to start using it. I will be the first to say that I'm still writing on a piece of paper because my PDF thing doesn't love me that much and playing with Excel is where it is. So we are still in the work for that to make sure it's easier for our coaches to fill out, but this is a training session template, right? We didn't create this necessarily ourselves. It's, everything in soccer is always borrowed, but we periodize the practices also. So you are probably familiar with it, right? There's, that obviously looks like a warm-up and then they went into this activity and then there's another activity that probably built on itself and then they went to this activity, it looks maybe like they're ending with a scrimmage game. You should be able to see those as parents, that this is where the practice sort of progresses. That's exactly how we write these things out, all the way to the T from understanding the duration of how the activity is, this space and dimensions. So this goes back to those first slides and those definitions that, uh, Dr. Albertson was talking about. The duration of that activity, the number of sets that we want and the work-to-rest ratio, recovery, how much time are we giving in between? Why do we want to put that on there? We want to have the work-to-recovery because we want to know what energy system we're tapping into, right? If we're going for a longer duration, then we're going to be probably closer to more aerobic and if we want to go for a shorter duration, we want it to be nice and sharp, we're going more anaerobic, which is probably looking more like sprint work. Which is more closely related to the game. The kids are sprinting, running, jogging, side shuffling, jumping, skipping. They're probably not skipping, but maybe they're skipping. Receiving a soccer ball, getting hit by somebody, somebody's fly tackling potentially. Imagine all the external load factors in the game. Those are the components that we're all putting within our training session. Stage one, stage two, stage three. All the way down to understanding that all these things are like the methods of scoring substitutions. Like, we're trying to make sure that we have all of that planned out well so everyone gets the right load on their body as we need to, right? Learning activities also on there, the rules, everything that we want to do. So that first document that you saw Vanessa put up, there was a massive, you can read this entire wall, there's just this funny segment of it to see the entire calendar. All of that information goes on the lesson plan so we know where we're going. It's methodological, it's well thought out and that's the direction we're going, right? I'll zoom in, create a little bit more for you so you can see a little bit better, but the number of players on the attacking team, defending team, opponents was. There's a method behind the madness. We are not just showing up and saying, here you guys go keep the ball around now, let's try to do this activity, right? Sometimes coaches have to make adjustments, we have to work on the flies. Sometimes they don't know who's showing up to practice at what time. As we just said, if I don't know what you did on the Monday and Tuesday and now you're a little tired, I might now have to make an adjustment. At least I thought it out, but all of our coaches are well-versed on being flexible and adjusting to the, uh, demands and the requirements. So, I will turn it, so that was really quick, right? We got to see a little bit of a preseason segment, a little bit of our full calendar and not necessarily like entire, I wish I had all the periodization for my, uh, college teams, uh, still. and not necessarily like entire, I wish I had all the periodization for my college teams still. But I think the most important thing that we go next is what it is that we are doing while recovery looks like. And I'm gonna give it to the pro because she is a doctor and researches this way more than I do and it's always.
So, you know, this is just kind of what's out there, right? Like, these are the pros, guys. They're taking a lot of time off. And our kids aren't taking that much time off. They're going from one sport to the next, to the next, to the next, to the next, right? They're playing in high school, they're playing in middle school, they're playing club teams, they're playing multiple sports. I know at my house, it's like the running debate of like, "Well, can we play footsall?" Like, "Nope, because we're skiing and we're playing soccer." Like, "Nope, we gotta draw the line somewhere," right? So, that being said, I mean, it's really important to keep this in mind. The pros are taking time off to recover. Our kids are not, right? So, that being said, I mean, when you look at the MLS, it's not that they're sitting around doing nothing. Of course, they're not sitting around doing nothing. But even if they're going year-round, you know, they're rotating players, managing training loads, like all the stuff that we're talking about, right? So I think it's really important. I will say that some sports are truly off, like they are not allowed to report. MLB, they're one of them. Two to three months, do not come to the field, right? Don't show up in the training room. If you show up, you will be fined, right? Don't come in here and work out. So, kind of interesting, right? Uh, US Triathlon, they take four weeks. Um, they're running around the world, doing various different races all over the place, but they take a full month off. A lot of it is, you know, body, uh, just recovery. Um, some of it is truly that they have lost so much weight through the season that they have to then pack it back on, right? So it is kind of an interesting recovery timeframe for that.
So, um, this is you.
Yeah, yes, it's you.
So, as far as like offseason and preseason training that are concerned, to go back to what she was saying, besides the sport, even if you're not required to report, you're, the athletes are still doing something to get themselves better, right? And so in the offseason and preseason phases, which we have on a calendar right now, and I'm trying to rock my head around new soccer in general. And when I was in the state of Oregon, I was like, "When does the calendar start and stop?" Like, how are we actually periodizing? It doesn't, right? It didn't stop. I got to the state of Oregon, I'm working on the ODP calendar and I'm trying to work with some clubs for a minute and like, there is no start and stop to the calendar. Like, when do we actually? When do we go to the lake, right? Like, and not even just me personally. When do the kids actually have time to go out and just be little kids for a minute? And then when can we actually start about preseason and? That, I think that's the biggest thing that comes out of this is like, when do they have the moment to go and be a little kid and then end the calendar? There's a reason why us as a society and culture likes, it'd be like rituals, like birthdays and stuff, you're playing or something. To recognize this is an offseason time. So I have time to rest and recover mentally and physically and I know when it's meant for me to switch back on again, right? Mentally and prepare my body physically. So I wrote a lot of stuff up here about the physical component of it, but I would, I would leave here and have nightmares if I didn't actually bring back the whole like, these are little kids, these are children. And the graphs that I showed you were from college students. They're already physically matured, cognitively and all. Our prefrontal cortex doesn't like finish until what? I think it's like 30. I think I saw 30 now, I'm like, "That's great, I do feel like I'm not an adult yet." You're not a child, right? So like, they're already done physically growing. And we were talking about this when we came in today and I'm like, I wish you'd have put it on the slide deck and part of the offseason part. I was only allowed to be around the student athletes for 20 hours a week. 20 hours a week, we could have crushed them and ran them 20 hours a week, but 20 hours a week at most in-season. If I put that question out to you, soccer alone, how many hours a week in sport are the kids playing and when do they take a time off? I wonder how many kids are doing more than 20 hours a week in sport, I'm not sure. Because you take into account local weekends and stuff. And the NCAA mandates a mandatory day off at the very least so they can have those components. And those are for humans that are already physically matured, right? They're already physically matured, their bodies are not actually still contributing to needing extra energy for growth and maturation and reaching your peak height, actual height, right? And all of those components that go into it. So I, I put these things on there about, "Yeah, this is what we do in the offseason, the preseason." I'm like, "Let's also take one step back and have a little extra context, right?" The kids shouldn't just be like doing nothing and sitting on the couch and I'm an advocate for that. We should be doing something else. We can't be working on strength work and running and doing things to make our physical athletic profile that much better. But bringing it all the way back to context and knowing the NCAA says in-season, 20 hours. Spring, that's the Division One, spring, it's eight-hour weeks for like the first six weeks and then you can get into 20 hours for the last month and a half of, of the spring season. So imagine only as parents only having to do eight hours. Because that's helping you to do it so much easier to do that, right? So you can read some of those, but I just want to put that out. And then there's back to some of those kids. So the, the slide deck that had those graphs from first, this is this group of kids. This is, I'm sorry, it's so dark. On the left-hand side of the screen, those are the kids on the bus getting ready to go to the second round of the NCAA tournament. That top picture is them at the University of Florida. Uh, I wanted to put this on here and talk about it because the University of Florida game would have been the weekend before Thanksgiving. Really long season. The first time this group of women had gone to the second round of the NCAA tournament in four years. If that senior class hadn't gone to the NCAA tournament, they'd have been the first us, they were the first class in William and Mary history to have never gone in 30 years to the NCAA tournament. When we got there, a couple of kids, I'm not gonna say who, but a couple of kids said, "If this game, if we don't win this game, that's okay. I'm tired, I'm ready to go home." And the light bulb went off in my own head. Oh, that's why our college football team has practiced till December 3rd. Because December 3rd was when the NCAA championship was. And when you're talking about periodization, if you've never been there and you've never trained for it, then by the time you recognize how heavy that load is, you're like, "I'm tired, I don't want to do this anymore." I've actually hit the wall before it was over. They still competed, we lost 5-2, it was a fantastic match for sure. Uh, and a handful of the kids in this bottom picture, actually two of them played in the end of USL. One of them has a couple of records that they played that one. That top picture is us in, in the weight room. So I wanted to point out that your kids can actually still build strength and do things in-season if they're old enough and it's appropriate. I want to make sure I point that out. In-season, we lifted twice a week. Uh, in the spring season, we lifted three times a week. And that is a picture of them after leaving Virginia Beach. We were playing a fun little 7v7 tournament, wasn't a heavy training load. They got out of my van as we got there in time for their intramural basketball game. Because we played intramural basketball, we had two teams, they almost got kicked out of intramural basketball. We were too competitive, we ended up winning the game. So I wanted to put that on there because even a Division One women's soccer team in the spring season had enough time to do intramural basketball and take extra time to focus on the social aspect of the game, or of life, being a college kid and focus on their academics. And still have a really good type of, that's why they're in their game uniforms. Just kidding, they just got done playing, they got things.
It goes to the point of multi-sport athletes, it's good, it's important.
They were bad at it.
So, so I am gonna spend like just a couple of minutes just talking about injury here. So, you know, youth sport injury rates are really high and believe it or not, about 50% of them are preventable. Um, the CDC actually came out and said that this is an epidemic. We've got three and a half million kids, youth athletes showing up in emergency rooms and urgent cares and primary care offices with injury every year in the US. This is the US only, this isn't like the world, this is three and a half million kids here, right? So that means, you know, one in three participants is gonna seek medical attention for a sports-related injury. As you guys already know, kind of the standard line from the urgent cares is what? Six to 12 weeks, right? Something happened, you broke something, you get the cast on, four to six weeks. Then you got another couple of weeks of racing or whatever. If it's a tendon injury, it's gonna take 12 weeks. If it's a growth plate injury, it's gonna take 12 weeks, right? So this is taking significant amount of time out of our kids' lives, right, injury? So we should prevent it. And Jen's putting together the tools here for us with periodization to minimize this risk, which is great. Um, that being said, I mean, I don't know if any of you have been to the doctor recently, but I don't even like it and I am one. Um, I mean, the waiting times, the making the appointments, the nobody answers the phone, nobody is calling you back, yet, there's not enough of us. You know, one in three left during COVID. So, there, there's just not enough. And so it's getting worse. It's more time off work for you, it's more time away from the field, it's canceling practices, it's all the stuff, right? So it's not just our kids that this is affecting, it's affecting all of us. Um, injury, it's also cited as, you know, one of the top three reasons that kids, kids leave sports and it's actually the number one reason why elite kids leave sports. Um, second, uh, the second reason in elite kids, so in that, you know, Olympic, you know, development teams, um, is parental or coaching pressure, right? So, should be fun, right? Should still be fun. So I just bring this link in here, Stop Sports Injuries has been a really excellent website. They recommend it for all the coaches and families. Um, I know you guys also work with a parenting organization, which is awesome for, you know, just, you know, good information about how to support our kids. Um, so how do you know if you're doing adaptation right, right? Like, if you're periodizing right? And Jen alluded to this, like, we're not asking these kids what their, you know, perceived exertion is. We're not measuring heart rate variability. We're just kind of looking at them, like, "Are they okay today?" You know, "Are they showing up ti-" I mean, my kids roll out of bed and they're like, "I'm tired," right? They're tired all day long, they're teenagers, I get that. So that being said, I mean, it's hard as coaches, it's hard as parents to know where these kids are when they show up to practice, whether they're ready for that heavy load or whether they're not ready. Um, that being said, I think if you measure it, you will know, right? And so that's why we use some of these tools, these perceived exertion tools, heart rate variability. That's what we do at Nevada Sports Science, is we measure change, right? So I'm gonna get into that just a little bit. Um, when we do adaptation right, when we follow these periodized schedules the right way, we should see that super compensation and we should be able to measure it, right? So certain things, we measure all the time. Jump height. Okay, so if I stick you on a pair of force plates and I know what you started at and then you went through a 12-week training cycle and then I measure you again, I hope it went up. It should have, right? If it didn't, uh, we're doing something wrong, right? We're not recovering adequately, we're not feeding you well, you're not sleeping well, your stress level's too high, something's going wrong, right? So there's lots of stuff we can measure. Um, and this is what's being done in higher levels for sure. Um, you can see by Jen's graphs, they're measuring heart rate variability, they're using GPS systems. We're measuring resting heart rate, we're measuring force plate analysis, we're looking at symmetry and, you know, our female athletes in particular to try to minimize risk of ACL tears, right? So we're looking at all of this data, we're always pulling it. But the goal of all of this data is not just data. Like, we could frankly care less about, you know, whether your kid jumped 16 centimeters or 17 centimeters, we don't care. What we do care is that if they jumped 16 in the beginning of the season, that they're jumping 16 and a half mid-season, right? Or they're still jumping 16, they're not jumping 14. Does that make sense? So we want to see them continue to thrive, to continue to improve. Uh, and we can measure things like anaerobic capacity, we can measure sprint times, um, you know, reactive strength, all sorts of fun stuff. So, um, if you don't measure it, can't change it, right? So if we don't know, if, if all our teenagers on one soccer team are showing up on, "I'm tired", and you never measure anything, well, how do you know? If they're actually improving or getting worse, right? Unless you're measuring something, you can't actually change it. Um, and I think, you know, it is important to kind of think about where these athletes are in their maturity for sure, um, where they are developmentally, what sex they are, you know? Boys and girls are gonna develop differently, obviously. And, um, and even within like the boys, say, 2010 team, you're gonna have kids that are a foot and a half different in height, right? So I think, you know, just kind of letting that play in and also recognizing that we can test all the kids on that team and know that all the kids are improving, right? Or that, "Ooh, actually, this kid who just had this giant growth spurt, actually he needs a little more recovery," right? Or maybe we need a little bit more nutrition thrown in there. Or maybe a kiddo whose parents are in the middle of a divorce are not doing as well as we'd like them to, right? Well, let's measure how they're doing so that as a community, we can kind of get around that kid and help them. So, um, that being said, depending on the level of participation, testing, you know, is done differently. So when we talk about those very high-level people that I told you to think, this thing is not working anymore, um, that I told you to sort of keep in the back of your mind, your favorite pro player, they're getting tested every week, people, right? Has anybody ever seen the NFL combines? That's preseason, that's not during season. During season happens every week, right? So, that being said, these athletes are racehorses. They are being looked at for their performance gains and lossless. When we look at D1 players, usually we're looking about every two to four weeks that we're doing testing, pre-collegiate, a little bit less. And we haven't had the ability to test younger athletes until now here. So what's happened in the world of exercise physiology and in sports medicine is that we've had tools that have come into play that are way more accessible. I'll give you a quick little story. I ran a human performance lab when I was first out of fellowship in 2002 in Marin County. And I have force plates and I had my little tiny arc ray lactate tester. And those force plates did absolutely nothing but measure force and time. And then I had to do all the math, right? There was no software. It was a lot of hours of crunching numbers to figure out how much force are they generating when they squat? How much force are they generating when they push off, right? So that all being said, I think what's happened is that the technology's gotten so much better, so much faster that we can actually use these types of information for our younger athletes as well. So, with that, we thank you guys. Do you guys have any questions? Yeah, sure, shoot.
So, is the F mark at 11 plus that FIFA did, is that worth anything anymore? Can you give us something newer?
Eight, you're talking about the ACL injury prevention.
Strengthening and all that stuff and there's like level one, two, and three. And like, is that something worth? I've done it over the years, but it's old.
Yeah, so that's a warm-up, that's like a warm, like, those are warm-up things, right?
Well, the strengthening piece, all the climbing and.
Yeah. I think to some extent, like, the context of where FIFA was isn't gonna hit every portion of the country, right? Or the country around the world, right? Because that's where we are. If we're gonna make, and I, there is a, a woman who was in Maryland, but now she's out of Florida and I only remember her Twitter handle right now and she's gonna hate me for this. But essentially, there are some coaches we're recognizing, especially for our female athletes, that we need to be in strength training. And the adolescent athlete and we need to be doing sprint testing and sprint work and understanding how to decelerate because that is potentially one of the reasons why we have those injury, uh, rate increases. We can't just do it at practice, is my point, right? It's not something that we can do in just that like 15 minutes before or even like here, try to do these like body weight activities. We can actually and should be making it a priority for our female athletes in-season to do maintenance and postseason and preseason prioritizing strength work. And we should actually see, which I think she's now recognizing that in her own world, her own scope of practice, a decrease in soft tissue injury. Let's just call it all those are soft tissue injuries. We always talk about ACLs, but we don't talk about all the other components that come into it. And we saw it at AOMBC when we started prioritizing strength and, you know, the loading of the jumps and how we're doing that in a methodological way and doing it in-season. We saw soft tissue injury just plummet. We didn't have any in our last year. Not a single hamstring, calf, pole, nothing. No ACL tears in-season, none of that happened for us, which was like touch wood.
And I'm just saying like, I have an 11-year-old girl, so there, I'm not doing really much of the strengthening yet. I wasn't, I could ask for that, what age do you start at? We use the 11 plus.
We'll talk about it later.
If, you know, if there's something newer out there that we can start at our age, can you?
So FIFA 11, let me come back to that just for a second. So FIFA 11, beautiful poster, all these great exercises, awesome war, awesome warm-up, has not been shown in the medical research to decrease injury. And after, was it last year, the three ACLs on the pro team?
Oh, the women's.
Um, yeah, so on the women's soccer, three ACL tears, there was a task force that FIFA put out there of like, "We should have figured this out, this is ridiculous," right? So that being said, we don't know. We don't have a, like, the magical, you know, combination of exercises. Um, but we do know that there are certain risks that predispose kids, for example, being asymmetric with jumping or with slowing down, right? So when your kids.
Reading that book Warrior Girls just scares the hell out of me.
Right.
Female coach, you know, coach of girls.
Yep.
And, you know, learning about the Q angle in the hip and like how it's.
Right, dynamic hip strength, that's what's up. Like, if we, if we can help our young women have stronger hips and not be afraid of actually getting in and building strength and muscle in the right kind of way. Because let's, like, it's slightly off-topic, but not, like, our gender has been stigmatized from like, "Don't go and lift, you're gonna look like a man, like, don't do that." We don't allow girls like go in and get after it. Like, that's how I grew up, like, and in, at the college level, Division One, in this decade, I had to, guys, you're not, you're not working that hard, like, you're not gonna, you're not gonna look like a shrimp. Like, what are you talking about, what are we afraid of? So at 11 years old, we can be doing these strength training activities and teaching decelerations and sprinting and all of that now, absolutely. and teaching decelerations and sprinting and all of that now, absolutely.
We have to go to here.
We need to put together a whole lot of talk. The short answer on, you know, at what point can you strength train? So, you can strength train from age eight and up.
Okay.
The way you strength train a skeletonly immature athlete is different than how you strength train a skeletonly mature athlete. So, what you do with your skeletonly immature, so your young kids, is you're incrementing lots of repetitions with low weights, and you're learning how to maintain form, right? So, you're learning how to actually do a squat versus like the, you know, wiggle all over the place, right? You're learning how to move your body in a concerted manner. That being said, when you're skeletonly mature, like everybody in this room, you can load, right? Then you load, you decrease the number of repetitions, you decrease the number of sets, so that you hypertrophy or get bigger muscles. You cannot make an eleven-year-old boy big giant muscles, doesn't work, right? It just isn't part of it, because they don't have the testosterone yet. But you can teach that eleven-year-old boy how to squat, so that when he's ready to go to the gym to do a squat, or a deadlift, or a curl, or a bench press, or whatever, he doesn't get injured, right? So that they know how to do the form, so they can walk. Yeah? Did I hopefully answer that question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, is the club working on something like that for different levels and different sexes? So, like, U-13 male preseason, or like, maybe preseason and during season lifting plan?
So, what the club is still going to be doing is focusing on this, like, the soccer periodization of it, and the load of the soccer aspect of it, like, that is where we are right now in the building. So, we can discuss what preseason looks like, but as I just told you, when is, when does the last season start? When does it stop? When is preseason? Because preseason, if you, you saw what NCAA decided preseason was two weeks back then, and it still isn't that much greater at this point. But preseason really is like eight weeks. Like, if you're talking about the professional, mature skeleton athletes, it's eight weeks preseason to build up into it. The guys in the combine were training before they showed up there, right? Like, those are some of those components where we actually aren't doing it. And I'm not saying us, I'm just saying youth sports as a whole. The calendar is a ten-month calendar that doesn't act, that it, it can still be a ten, we can still plan a twelve-month calendar, there just needs to be break periods. But what we will not be doing is, this is how, this is when and how you're gonna strength train and all of that, what you're gonna do. Like, that is not gonna come out of that plan. There can be suggestions, absolutely, but you won't have. Here, go do these, yeah, go do these strength training exercises from Apex Soccer. There are resources, right? Nevada Sports Science, Athletic Republic, there's training, they're training all over the place. Training is all over the place, right? You want to vet all of that, for sure, but, yeah, absolutely. But we will not, as a club, be saying, here is your strength training protocols for the group. Yeah.
So, go on that, it's really gonna first strength training for adolescents. My daughters are not, it's gonna really involve parents and coaches in that part. If we decide we can be strength training or fitness training, and it would be helpful as a parent, and maybe have a link for some place to go to, for instance. Because you guys are more experts than we are.
Yeah.
You know, what is in the right direction, and say, maybe these are good, lots, and these are recommended?
So, let me try to answer that. So, I didn't even really tell you what we do at Nevada Sports Science, other than do some testing. One of the things that we do is team testing. So, we bring in the whole team at once, we do some sport-specific testing, we find those deficiencies, we find, you know, the places where, oh boy, there's a forty-five percent, you know, asymmetry in your right leg, like, you're set up for an ACL, right? And then we build the exercise program for the coach. So, that being said, we also do individual testing. So, if you have a kid who's particularly interested in having this done, or parents are, we do a full-hour assessment of running them through, oh boy, mobility of the lower body, core stability, strength, speed, power, um, and agility, and anaerobic capacity. And then we pull all that together and give you an interpretation of that, so that it's in English, and then we give you the exercises to go along with it. That being said, I'm not a coach, right? I'm happy to have some knowledge in the exercise physiology worlds and in the medical world, but, you know, handing you off to somewhere like, you know, Athletic Republic, or somewhere where you're gonna get sport-specific coaching is a great resource. I mean, so I think really looking at those programs is really worth doing.
So, and I don't, no, I don't know that I shared this out loud, because I didn't have my slides in front of me, I was just excited to get going. I am also the Director of Sports Performance for Athletic Republic. So, we do a similar, uh, component, and we do team training as well, but we have soccer players, volleyball players, lacrosse players, football players, all in our training center, working together. Uh, and we have teammates working together at the same time, and we have competitors working, uh, against each other at the same time. We are also in the business of testing, of the athletes, and testing teams in the process. And Dr. Albertson and I are like trying to just make this all work together, so that we can best serve, uh, Northern Nevada. So, I, what I pointed into, Apex won't be making those things happen, that's just not in our wheelhouse right now, or in our wheelhouse, really. Our, we're an athlete, we're in a soccer player development, and then educating parents and periodizing our calendars, and in which case, there will be those windows of opportunity where we're suggesting go and get, go and get that extra work. And the other component behind, I wanna say this too, and this is important, because if you're my athlete at Apex, I probably am not always gonna work, I won't be out working with you all the time in a situation like Athletic Republic. As I learned at the college level, there needs to be different voices around the kids. So, I started to get, dive into the exercise science side and the strength and conditioning side, while being at the college level, recognizing that the kids don't need to hear me on the soccer field at the same time as me telling them to go to bed on time, eat well, hydrate well, do these things, because eventually your voice just turns into white noise. I'm also learning that with my four-year-old. Turns into white noise, and we need a village, so you have to like find your niche, and that was my niche, started to become my niche at UMC, um, coaching the bullpilots at the same time, but not keeping my opinions about some of the things for the players aside, so that I can be that person that helps guide them and mentor them away from staying up way too late, you know, like, just actually take care of your bodies and wants to do this and that, so.
Do you wanna introduce Jeff?
Yeah, and Jeff, so Jeff Hunter, the owner of Athletic Republic, he's also a parent in Apex, uh, also, boys are back that way. So, Jeff, thank you for coming, thank you for that, uh, extra bit too. So, yeah, Jeff is here too. We're really excited to have Athletic Republic open in December. Uh, it's, uh, just been fantastic to work in that space and dive into the sports science side, and being in a training facility, and then also getting to be Dr. Albertson in the training facility, like, is driven by science and trying to make sure that we're moving it the right way, just not based off of our own feelings, I have feelings about a lot of things there at all, that's right. Definitely, all right, but good question, thank you, thank you.
If you have any other questions, you know, after, please come ask away.
There will be more information that can roll through too, because as coaches, we'll continue to talk about this stuff as we roll it out into our parents and families. Um, and I just wanna say thank you again, one last time, to Dr. Albertson, to Paul Brain and Rock, and to Athletic Republic, for the coaches for having appeared, and you guys just for coming out, because it's a lot, it's a lot of time and energy, and we're very passionate about it, and we wanna keep everybody healthy as possible and reach your full potential, so, thank you, guys. All right.